Looks like we're all in order, so I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Lewisburg Area Board of School Directors. Please rise to the president's pledge release. A pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all. Right. Dr. Zimmerman is excused this evening, and Dr. Unzicke Fosero is joining us via Zoom. We met in executive session for about 30 minutes to talk about a few personnel matters, as well as some building and security improvements. With that, I'll take any citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. Do we have anything online, John?
Nothing online so far.
Is anyone here to comment on something that is an agenda item? The wage is not an agenda item. No, there's nothing even related to that. Okay. All right, so our first action item for the evening is the new textbooks and literary titles. We've seen these before, so if anyone would like to make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Kraus.
Second.
Sent by Ms. Haynos. Any discussion? All right, I think we can just do this by voice, right? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, Tara. I didn't hear any opposed. All right, the item passes. Thank you.
Aye.
The next item is new business. If you want to, this is a simple one, but if you just want to tell people what it's about.
Sure. It's the pre-K counts program e-signature resolution. In order for us to accept the pre-K counts grant monies, as we are hopeful will come through once the budgetary process is finished in Harrisburg, the grant signature is an electronic signature. The board is giving an affirmation by resolution allowing me to sign to accept the pre-K monies.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Kraus.
Second.
Second by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion? Okay, Paul?
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicke Fosero?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next items are informational items, and Mrs. Moser provided a list for us of the curricular course materials. Do you want to say anything more about that? Just read.
Exactly. As we always write the new course overviews at this time, I would ask that you do take some time and opportunity. There are 20 courses, either new to the district or substantially revised. They're listed there in the sheet that you have in your board folders, and they represent elementary, middle, and high school, new electives, revised courses, a wonderful compilation. They are information this meeting and then action for vote the following meeting here as we come back in August.
Thank you.
Yes.
The next item is the proposal for the group trip to Spain next summer. Do you want to add any context to that?
I do. Our own policy calls for you to have plenty of advance warning of an international trip, and so true to that protocol, Ms. Jankowski, Ms. Driscoll, put together the proposal that you have as to their itinerary and estimated cost per student. There have been times trips planned don't come to fruition for any reason, but at this point, it's giving that initial awareness, as they do take a student trip approximately every other year and hope to take this one in the summer of 2024. So it's your information to have at this point.
The next item is the board president's report. I have to thank Mrs. Moser for providing me a list of dates that I will read and then give to the press, so everything is accurate. We have band camp coming up, starting in the second week of August. The fall sports parent meeting is July 31st at 7:00 PM here in the high school. There are physicals available on August 2nd, and then we have football practice, golf practice, and other fall sports beginning in August. Some of the important dates related to district academic side things. So convocation for all staff is August 21st, Monday, and that's the same day as the grade six back to school night. And then the following day, there's going to be ninth grade orientation and kindergarten and pre-K orientation, because the first day of school is August 23rd. And the back to school night for grades seven and eight will be August 30th. So that takes us through the month of August, and if you're interested, you can grab that at the end of the meeting. The other thing I want to acknowledge is the greenhouse is being built. There's real things out in the backyard that you can see, so that's great. And for anyone who has been in any of our buildings recently, there's lots of painting going on, there's lots of cleaning going on, and I'm, there's just a really, we always talk about how much summer work there is, and it's in the thick of it right now in this building. That's all I've got.
Great. I did write my summary comments for my report this evening, but before I begin, I want to point out that again, our soon-to-becoming-on-board assistant superintendent, Mr. Hoover, is with us tonight. And a first introduction, his name appears on our personnel report, but I'm happy to introduce to us collectively Mr. Leon Tucker, who's coming into our boys' basketball position. Welcome. Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Tucker.
Welcome. I'm also happy to share that we've accomplished the substantial amount of our hiring and staffing for the coming school year. We've brought our administrators on board, some coaches on board, and our teaching positions. We'll continue our efforts and hope to conclude them all with the first meeting in August. I'm also happy to share, as Dr. Jablonsky referenced, that the many, many, many summer projects are moving along. Our paving projects are complete at Lindtown, Kelly, and Middle School. The Lindtown roof is complete. The Kelly floor has been repaired. The bathroom partitions in, again, three buildings, Middle School, Lindtown, and Kelly, have all been replaced. Hot water heaters and fire panel projects at Kelly should be completed before the end of the month of July. The painting project continues to move along. Basically, what remains are the libraries, the Kelly gym cafeteria, and our own central offices will soon be where the painters will be located. The high school greenhouse is going up. The Kelly playground project transitions from the old playground coming down to the site preparation for the installation of the new equipment. And finally, in mentioning the playground, I want to thank now, and no doubt, again and again and again, the collaboration and the generosity of the Degenstein Foundation, who with the facilitation of our own Green Dragon Foundation, yields us an award of $75,000 toward the cost of the new playground equipment. We also want to acknowledge and appreciate the donation of the wood materials for framing the playground from Ben Remy through his company, The Palette Company. It's exciting to see all these things coming together as we speed through the days and the weeks of our summer. Thank you.
Thank you. For these on committee reports, I don't know that any are meeting at this time. Does anybody have anything? Okay. So we're on to the consent agenda. It has quite a bit of content there, but these are typical themes. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Kraus.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lyons. Any discussion? We have more items to thank the Green Dragon Foundation for. Okay.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicke Fosero?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item is citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. We have two folks who have put in cards here. So Sheri, here's his first. If you'd like to go first, you can come to the podium so people on Zoom can hear you. Okay. The other card I have here is from, oh, okay. Ms. Roy, sure, yeah.
I have a, some comments prepared. They're over three minutes long. It's about 10 minutes. Is that acceptable?
Oh, our policy says three minutes.
Yeah, board policy 903 here. Citizens are afforded three minutes for their presentation. If you have something longer, you're welcome to submit it and write it to the board.
I would just ask, as a resident of the district and also as the assigned union representative, to be afforded the additional time to speak on behalf of the workers that I represent.
I'll make that motion to waive our policy.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thanks.
Motion by Mr. Fetzer.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lyons. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, there you go.
Thank you. I think most of you know me. My name is Adam Aguirre. I'm an ASME union representative at the Lewisburg Area School District since November of 2019. My wife and I were married during COVID here in Lewisburg. We bought a home in the district in 2021, and we were elated to find a home in this district. Our number one priority was finding a home to settle down where education and inclusion are celebrated. This September, we're expecting a baby girl. Our union ASME proudly represents custodial maintenance and food service employees in the district. Our union currently represents 29 essential employees. I have watched firsthand these workers hold together the food service, custodial, and maintenance operations during COVID-19. They were making sure every student that needed a meal received one regardless of whether or not the school was open. Our members made sure that our schools were sanitized and clean while we face an unknown pandemic. Many of them did all of this while earning less than $12 an hour. In 2021, the food service workers from our union were excluded from pay increases that the district afforded to other employees. Shortly thereafter, those food service workers circulated petitions asking for the same 31 cent increase that other district employees received. After an overwhelming support from the community, the school board reconsidered and provided members, and provided our members, the 31 cents. Many members of the community asked why our union was only asking for 31 cents. They were asking why we weren't asking for a living wage in 2021. And the reason for that is because the union cannot bargain for a living wage with the employer when there's no obligation to bargain during the terms of the contract. The appropriate time to bargain an agreement is before the expiration of the contract. Since the petition circulation, the school district provided non-union employees longevity increases while ignoring ASME employees that the district deemed essential during COVID-19. These non-union employees pay 0% towards their healthcare. The school district successfully negotiated and ratified the teachers' union contract in August of 2022. This is 10 months before it expired. However, when it came to the essential employees of this district, the school board was not willing to sit down with us early. When I sent requests to bargain early to Dr. Baugh and Dr. Fairchild, the union was told that there was not an interest in an early-bur contract. This school board refused to bargain with its essential employees. Our union requested to bargain early in February of 2022 after the district gave out longevity increases to non-union employees but neglected to provide the same wage increases to custodial maintenance and food service employees. This district again refused to bargain with their essential employees. During this time, Dr. Fairchild and this school board did nothing to attempt to keep longtime employees with the district while they were walking out the door. Food service worker Lisa Schwartz left the district after nine years and was only making $12 an hour. I asked the district to match what her new employer was offering her, which was less than $15 an hour, and the district refused to pay. Her daughter currently works here in the food, in the district as a food service worker, earning less than $12 an hour. You should pay her a living wage, and you should have paid her mother a living wage. On December 1st of 2022, I sent an intent to bargain letter to the school district and provided dates in January of 2023 to engage in union contract negotiations so that we can finally provide a living wage to these employees. This was done in accordance with Pennsylvania's Collective Bargaining Act. The employer did respond, the employer did not respond that they were available in January of 2023. Once again, the employer's not bargaining. The first session occurred February 10th of 2023. Dr. Fairchild was the only person that participated in person in that meeting. The rest of the school board members attended this session virtually. What a message to send your essential employees after a pandemic. The employer also did not have any, did not have a wage proposal prepared for our union negotiating team when we met. This does not meet the definition of bargaining in good faith. The district provided their initial poverty proposal at the March 23rd, 2023 negotiating session. This proposal included concessions to food service workers, janitors, and maintenance employees. This school district proposed to double the employees' healthcare costs and give them 25 cents a year as increases while rejecting the longevity increases provided to non-union employees. Those are the district's actions. That was what this district's response was to essential employees participating in a living wage campaign. That was your response to Lewisburg Loves a Living Wage. You disrespected these employees at the table. You treated them different because they're union. Members of the union negotiating team were very confused by the employer's response to them after employees provided services through the pandemic and gave pay increases to other district employees. Since 2019, over half the employees working within our bargaining unit have separated employment. Brian Root and Jim Stahl of the union negotiating team have over 20 and 30 years of service to this district, and you handed them a poverty proposal. Those are the actions of an anti-union employer. This employer had no intention of meeting its obligations under Act 88 or bargaining in good faith with its essential employees. What I found more discouraging was the attitude of school board members while they sat across the table from our members and acted like this was somehow normal. The employer notified the union they would not be attending the May 1st scheduled bargaining session, only to find out that administrators from the district's negotiating team were assisting in the facilitation of a petition to get rid of the union. What is more disappointing than openly bargaining in bad faith while circulating petitions to get rid of the union is the anti-union letter that Dr. Fairchild sent out to the members of ASME after the employer refused to bargain. And you're smiling because you think it's funny. On May 25th, it's, and it's not gonna be funny when we file charges. On May 25th, high school cafeteria food service manager and member of the union's negotiating team, Amanda Forrester, sent an email to you, Dr. Jablonsky, requesting to file a harassment complaint. On June 22nd, this board approved her demotion from $16.34 an hour to $12.11 an hour, reducing her hours and taking away her healthcare. I will say whoever was responsible for returning her healthcare, thank you, because my understanding is she has the healthcare now. So whoever did that, thank you. When I contacted the district's attorney regarding the matter, he stated this was for performance reasons but was unable to forward documentation to demonstrate any actual evidence. I find it interesting because this is, Amanda was one of the many ASME food service workers who assisted your food service department to carry over $55,000 in your budget, and then she was demoted. Your response was to reduce her pay, reduce her hours, and take away her healthcare. Not only is this an unfair labor practice and a prime example of anti-union animus, but the optics of the school district taking these actions reflects poorly on us as a community. I say that as someone who can tell you which employees in the district receive food stamps and have difficulties making ends meet while earning less than $12 an hour. Amanda helped circulate that petition for food service workers, and she served as a union negotiator on the team. This is retaliation. After the June 22nd school board meeting, Dr. Fairchild sent an anti-union letter dated June 23rd to employees of our union telling them their union is garbage because they do not have the same healthcare as non-union employees. I'm not sure if this decision to send the letter was authorized by the board. I emailed you that question, Dr. Jablonsky, and I still have not received an answer. I would like to know if Dr. Fairchild, the same person that I've been working with for four years, the same person that was there in 2021 when these workers circulated that petition, the same person that I submitted requests to bargain early with the board in 2022, and the same person that denied our union members the same healthcare across the table, the same person that sent an anti-union letter blaming the union for not having healthcare when he's the one responsible for it, I'd like to know why the letter was sent. I would like to know how it brings these workers closer to justice and fairness. I am upset that these employees now have a union contract that is expired. Everyone else in this district has received their pay raises except for them. This employer has failed to bargain in good faith, and it's clear they will do and say anything not to deal with our union. I want to remind you that I am not the union. The union are the people that came to work every day during the pandemic and are still working for the district. I think if instead of playing games on whether someone's union or non-union, you should treat them with respect and dignity. How dare you call them essential and not provide them the compensation that they need to survive. It upsets me as a taxpayer that this district authorized increasing the hourly rate of its labor attorney to $165 an hour after citing inflationary pressures, but when you sat across the table from us, you acted like you never heard of inflation. The board took this action in December of 2022. What sickens me is knowing there are employees who have worked here at this, at this district since 1997, and the district pays them less than $15 an hour. It sickens me that my neighbors, your workers, have to rely on food stamps and public assistance because they're paid starvation wages. It makes my heart broken to hear that our workers' children, your students, do not have the meals they need. It breaks my heart to know your workers living down the street must use food banks and churches for meals. In closing, this district has a budget over $39 million. You need to pay your employees a living wage. You need to give them the same longevity increases that you gave to all other non-union employees. Anything short of immediate action on these items from the district is a failure. You cannot deem these employees essential and then reject their request for equality. Thank you for your time.
So the, the board does not comment or respond during public comment periods? Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sheri Jacobson. I'm a resident of the school district. Both of my children went through K through 12 schools here. Kate is here, she was class of 2022, and my son Nick graduated in 2019. And we've been totally delighted with the schools, but I would like to speak in favor of the district making sure all the employees earn a living wage. And if you'll permit me, I served our country for two years in the Democratic Republic of the Congo as an educator, and I was fortunate to have a principal who, in one of our first faculty meetings, talked about how we didn't just teach our subject matter. I was there to teach differential equations and calculus and linear algebra, but he said, "That's only part of what you're doing here. The way you talk to your students, the way you treat them, the way you expect them to treat each other, the way you work with your colleagues, this is all part of what educates our students." And as a school district, the way we treat our employees is part of the education of our students. It's not just what they do in that English class or, or that calc class. It's what they see all around them, and whether the school district values labor and values the people who put together their school every day for our students. And I was really distressed to find out that we had all these employees in our district who were not making a living wage. I think it sends the wrong message to students. I would also say, I was pretty upset by the tone of John Fairchild's letter. As a member of the district, that did not represent me in the least. I thought the tone was unprofessional because it was sarcastic and it was snarky. It made it look like there was something the matter with the union if they called out the district for doing something which he said was illegal. That's totally normal. If the district does something it's not allowed to do, it's okay to call them out for it. This is a really serious issue, and workers deserve to be treated in a straightforward and dispassionate way, inform them that there will, them that there will be an election. But all that editorializing and the tone, I thought, was really upsetting. So those are my two points. Please give the workers a, a living wage, and please communicate with them in the future with a tone of respect and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Sure. We just need your name and address.
Charles Fung, 1608 Moore School Road. As a former employee of the Lewisburg Area School District, also as a former union president, I will say that I sat down across from some of you in here four years ago and negotiated a union contract. And we had a very fair negotiation, I thought. I don't know what has happened now, but I do also know that through the pandemic, we have, the school district has lost several custodians, food service workers, and I believe they're filled with maintenance now, and have not been able to replace those people. And the reason for that is due to the fact of not having a living wage. You aren't going to get somebody to come in here and work eight hours a day for $12 an hour. It's not going to happen. And as a former employee, as a taxpayer, as having two children in this school, I'd really love to see those positions filled so our schools are getting cleaned, sanitized properly, and our kids are getting fed properly. Other than that, I just really feel the board ought to sit down and discuss a living wage with the ASME union. That's everything. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to make a comment? I think I can share that we are disallowed from speaking with the union during this time. I think it's explicitly illegal for us to do so until the election is complete. Is that true?
If you would like to talk after the meeting, we could talk after the meeting. My understanding is, as elected officials, you decide what happens with the district. And Chuck can tell you, as a former local president, if the district wanted to give additional money to the employees, we're not going to say no as the union. We wouldn't say no. But to say that the district bargained in good faith when I have been asking this district to bargain for multiple years and we were met with hostility at the table, that's what is reflected in the employer's proposal. And all I'm saying is, it didn't have to be that way. That was a decision made by whoever. But I know this, I know that the treatment that Jim Stahl received, the treatment that Amanda Forrester received, that Joy Meadows received, and that Brian Root received at that table, for the members of the negotiating team that were there, that sat at that table, they know what was in that they know what was in that proposal. And it was wrong. It was wrong to send that proposal. And I wish that it didn't have to be this way. And I wish that this school board would at least listen to what I'm saying when I am trying to show you, like, what else are we supposed to do as the union to get people a living wage? I just, I don't know. And we're the union. We're going to come into negotiations at $20 an hour. That's what we're going to do. That doesn't mean that the employees, when we were proposing the same health care, that someone should sit across the table from us, tell us no, and then send a letter saying, "Well, you don't have that health care, and basically, you're never going to get it." And there will be an unfair labor practice charge filed against this district. And I don't want to do that. I would rather not do that where I live. But that is the corner that we have been put into as the union now. And I know, because I've talked to the workers, that this petition was circulated. I know when it was circulated and who circulated it. And it was done under the administration. They were well aware of it. And when I asked the attorney of the district when they were aware of the petition, they told me the day that it came in the mail, and that's not true. And if that person told you it's illegal to talk to me, I'm going to say that's not true either. That would be my long answer.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. If there are no further comments from citizens? Okay. I think we're going to move to director's comments. I'm not going to put anyone on the spot to start. I'll go first this evening, so you all have a minute. It's really important for us to hear from the public always. And I think I have answered every email that has been sent, and I think I have communicated with our administration and, if necessary, district solicitor, other board members, whomever. I have not served on an ASME committee yet, so I don't have any firsthand knowledge of the circumstances that you described. But I appreciate when anyone gives an impassioned plea, and I think the rest of the board does as well. So you should know that we do respect that. We do hear it. And we would look to let our employees know that they are valued. I think that a public meeting is never the best place to have a dialogue, of course. But right now, these are the circumstances as they are. So I look forward to a future meeting when we may have different circumstances. So I hope everyone had a moment to collect their thoughts. I can call on someone. Jordan, do you want to?
Did the board authorize the letter? I think that is not a question about negotiations. It's a question about the actual decisions made here in the district.
Your time is ended.
I know you're upset because you sat across the table and you wanted to take things from them. So I know you're upset, and you call yourself a Christian. You call yourself a Christian, but I don't remember Jesus sending a proposal across the table that looked like yours.
This is uncalled for.
So we're going to take the temperature down for a second. There are some things we cannot comment on, either because they're from executive session or because they involve other personnel situations. So unfortunately, other than the direct email that I sent, I cannot respond.
I just wanted to welcome the new staff. Again, thanks for coming this evening, and we welcome you guys to the district now that it's officially approved, too. Thank you. To everybody who spoke tonight, thank you for coming this evening. The rationale behind the three minutes is just to, you know, we have hundreds of people showing up. So I hope that us waving that just sends you the message that we do want to hear from you guys. Again, I've done that many times throughout COVID, and I'll continue to do that as long as we can because I truly do want to hear from our community. So thank you. You know, your words not fall on deaf ears. Again, there's always many, many different things that people say, different opinions. So we want to hear that from our community. So thank you for coming out this evening. And please pass it along to the lady who stepped out. Again, thank you for coming this evening and expressing her thoughts.
Welcome. Really excited to welcome some new folks, new staff, new administrators, and a long time coming. We're really happy to have you. So welcome. And I, too, am glad I've been on that side and I spoke in a passionate way. I actually think I was one of a large group at one point, so I only got my three minutes, which is hard for me. But I really do appreciate the fact that you came and you spoke your mind. And I could hear that passion in your voice, and I respect that a great deal. And I appreciate the fact that everyone who spoke here tonight did so, so thank you.
I would agree. I do actually like when people come and speak and pay attention to what we're doing in the board. I think it's very important for our community. I also do agree this is a really important conversation, talking about living wages. Within the last three months, I've been somebody that has been on the Capitol steps also talking about living wages. I do think something that is important is to look at how we best represent employees and the rights of employees. And I think at this time, how Erin spoke of we are waiting to move forward because we want to make sure that we're representing the rights in the way that the employees choose to move forward with it. And that is kind of what our holdup is at this moment. So we want to make sure we're backing the employees in the way that they're choosing to do it and not moving forward with a group just to move forward with a group. But I do thank everybody that came out today and that expressed that and to welcome new basketball coach.
I really don't have anything more to add. I reiterate my thanks to everyone for coming and my welcome to Mr. Hoover and Ms. Tucker.
I, too, think it is important that people come and speak up when they have something to say. I think there's a lot of things that get assumed that are not always correct, and the only way to correct that is to have the conversations. And so I do think it's important that people come and speak when they have questions or they need more information because we only know that when you share it with us. So again, thank you, everyone, for coming. Vince, good to see you again. Coach Tucker, we are very excited you are here. I have a rising eighth-grade basketball player, so he is ready to get going with whatever you have in store for them. We've got some passionate, passionate boys coming your way.
Welcome to Vince again, Coach Tucker. Thanks for coming out. Welcome to the district. Those who spoke, thank you for coming and sharing your comments. Like I think has been shared already here tonight. We look forward to getting to a resolution that I know we'll get to eventually. Like Chuck mentioned, I was part of the last two negotiations. Those were successfully resolved, and eventually, we will successfully resolve this one when we're allowed to.
I failed to welcome Coach Tucker, so we're really happy that you're here. Thank you, and good to see you again, Vince. With that, I can take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Lyons.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hanos. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned.